Do you all would stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. David Powers is coming. So we can wait a few minutes or let Jeff begin and then Dave will come in?
Whatever you prepare.
Well, why don't you get started and then David will piggyback up, piggyback on you.
All right.
Please.
Good. We've had a couple rather dry past couple of months with that we've had low flows at the wastewater plant. And with that brings some odoriferous smells to the atmosphere. We have had a couple smell complaints over the last month specifically on the causeways people walk around the islands. I have had, just so you're aware, my supervisor, deputy director of our facilities come out and as well as several engineers and DEC representative Paul Jacobs and, you know, comparatively speaking to other wastewater plants, we were doing pretty good. And I go around the car ditch and I really, I've become kind of those blind to it over the years. But, you know, I understand comparatively speaking, everyone that visits, I ask, can you smell this? Is this, is this bad? You know, every time I get, and I don't get any responses from my boss or my superiors. So I just wanted to pass that along. We do have Arbor Care coming to do some tree service for us along that fence line as well, right by the water line here. We do have a lot of cottonwood trees and a lot of sumac that's overgrown the fence and bringing down branches and leaves inside our ethyl and lift station. In order to keep the pumps running properly, we want to make sure we get those trees removed. It's kind of an exercise we do every few years. That sumac grows back so quick. This time he's going to spray it with some kind of pesticide. Once they cut it down to the ground level, that'll, that'll keep it there for a while.
Did you get any complaints about down at the Arborhouse?
For odors?
Odors, yes.
Uh, no, no, I didn't get any complaints from, that would be by the pump station then on Riverside. No, I have not, but.
I had been down there one and I did notice that there was people over.
Did you pick it up on?
Yeah, I was thinking that they were going to complain.
Okay. Yeah, I dearly noted. We do, we did clean it out this year, you know, we removed all the grit and all the sludge from the bottom. That's kind of an exercise we do every year. We've been on top of the preventative maintenance there. If smells become too much, I can have the guys go down there and they'll put a sand sock in there, just kind of mask the odor is all it does. But we should do that anyways in these hot summer months, especially when it's this dry out. I'll make a note of that. We did have a couple of anniversaries this month. Eric Dingman's celebrated his 22nd year anniversary on the 7th. And last month Dustin Orvis celebrated his seven years with us.
Seven, seven.
So it's, you know, it's nice to see low turnover rates like that. I haven't been from other organizations where you see a lot of turnover. So we have the French Creek Bridge. Currently, the water line is repaired. We are collecting materials currently so we can insulate it in time for winter. So we should have that wrapped up. People, we're going to, we're going to wrap it with a metal outer lining as well. So it'll kind of match what's, what's there and protect against any salt or erosion we might see over the winter. I know that Dave Powers was going to hit the podium a little while later, but we were hoping that the awarded contractor would walk the bridge with us and offer an cost to link that into the project that we have open right now. Some more to come on that. As far as the water plant is concerned, we had some annual tests performed. We did our nitrate tests. They came back at 0.22 milligrams per liter. The max contamination level for that is 10 milligrams per liter. So this is our finished water that's entering the distribution point, the entry point they call it. So we are doing well there. You know, high, high nitrate levels could sometimes cause cancers or blue baby syndrome in infants. So it's something that DOH likes to really keep an eye out for. We also performed our quarterly disinfection byproduct test throughout the distribution system. So this test is performed quarterly. And since last year, we had kind of a high test result this third quarter, these months kind of add up with the, uh, just everything is right in the atmosphere that the test results are usually the highest this third quarter. So we're keeping a close eye on that. We did have the aqua flusher running all season at the, at the water tower. So that just slowly releases a little bit of water every day to help the turnover in the tank. So the chlorine could remain effective over time. So we believe we will be in good shape. I will report those results at the next meeting. Was hit by kind of a unkindly surprise by one of our vendors that hosts our 911 system, our Win 911 system. Now, this is a system that alerts all our operators whenever there's an alarm in the system and anywhere in between the water and the sewer. And there's literally over a thousand alarms that are linked to the SCADA, which we'll in turn send to our phones. This service was $1,200 for the year when I started in '23. Now it's $2,850 for the year. So that's quite a remarkable increase and, you know, we budget for these sort of things. And I know if I were to pass those kind of rate increases on to our customers, you know, they'd throw a brick at me. So, you know, I expressed my dissatisfaction with their, with their service. It's been kind of clunky. It hasn't been foolproof. I've been discussing with some of my colleagues, some other alternatives, spoke with Don Ballway, the owner of Aqualogics. And we believe he's coming up next week to present to us this system that's known as Stride Links. And so with this system, it's $140 for the whole year. And we would have to pay for the setup fee for Don Ballway.
A hundred and forty for the year?
A hundred and forty for the year as opposed to $2,850 for the year. So yeah, that'd be a no brainer. We're going to have to sell it to some of our more senior operators. It's new technology. They'll have an app on their phone. It'll be multi-factor authentication. So it'll have the cybersecurity built into it. But it will kind of bring us up into a more modern era of monitoring our SCADA system. Whereas we will utilize these old auto driver systems from the low lift and from the water plant. Those are bomb proof. They'll call out over the phone line through the phone tree, alert the operators. They'll be able to get on their phone, open up the Stride Links app and access the SCADA from their Stride Links and see where the alarm is coming from and as appropriately from there. So that's the intent. We're going to have a little demonstration next week with the operators and I hope we know as well because that would be a nice cost savings for us. Aside from that, I think that was, that was all in a nutshell unless there is anything pertaining to the report that we sent out last week.
Just a question. Greenstone, do we have them on retainer or for?
I'm sorry?
The Hydestone?
Hydestone, yeah. So they were just awarded a three-year contract to perform our preventative maintenance for all of our units. And they are new to us this year with that contract. They did notice that, I assume you're referring to the air exchanger at the pump station. Yeah. So they had that documented. They came back to us with the cost and they're going to be hopefully presenting a part to us this week, I'm hoping. I haven't heard from them yet today, but we would like to get that in yesterday. Yes, these, these parts are routinely monitored. It was during their visit that they had realized that this thing isn't working properly. They were going to put some costs together for us. The first cost they gave to us was a little high and then it failed. And we're like, all right, we need to do it. So there we are. But there is two air exchangers at that pump station. There's one for the chemical bulk storage area. And then there's one for the control room as well. So this was the one for the control room that they were referring to.
Are there any talks as far as, you know, being more sustainable as far as, you know, solar panels or anything like that?
Yeah.
Because we have such a big electricity bill.
I understand. Yeah, what is it? It's about $10,000, $15,000 a month, right? Well, I understand. Yeah, our electricity is our biggest, biggest cost. And, you know, with our, given our footprint, our pump stations, it wouldn't be feasible. I know we looked into this before with my predecessor. And as far as the pump stations are controlled, are concerned, there's just not enough roof space. There's not enough yard space to make it feasible. However, the plant, that might be an option. You know, we've got a lot of roof space. We've got some yard space over there. And obviously that's our biggest draw is the wastewater plant right now for utilities.
Yeah, the panels are a lot more efficient. You get a lot more bang for your buck as far as space too.
Sure.
Than you could even five years ago.
Well, yeah, mind you, when I was graduating from college, we were supposed to have windows by now that would all generate our power for us.
Yeah, yeah.
We're just, I'm not just waiting, but we're waiting also for some more grants to come out for that because we would qualify now being a brand's community smart.
Right. Yeah, I know.
And I know we had talked about that.
Organization, the climate smart.
Yes.
Yeah. So every time we invest in something that's, that's green, we get credits for it. Ideally, it should go in a pot that we could utilize for solar panels one day.
Yeah, I didn't know if Hydestone had any, you know, I know they do some things like that, but I didn't know if they had any information as far as ways to be more sustainable. And I know they're not a solar panel person, but they, they do do a lot of mechanics and things like that.
Sure.
Thanks.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yep.
Dave?
All right. Good evening, everybody. Good to see you, everybody. I think I missed the last month's meeting. We were very busy, but according to my document, we weren't that busy. I was like, what, where is all that? One of the things that I'm happy to look at and report is we have digitized our entry or permits for all the various, the variants. So all I had to do was cut and paste and drop them in for what we have last, last two months. That was a nice effort. We retro cleaned it up, our backfitted everything for a couple of years. Prior to that, we don't have the information. It's the old fashioned go to the file and take a look. But not a lot of activities on the zoning. We had some fences. We had some garage alterations. Again, those are all setbacks. Fencing, we're just basically making sure you're rebuilding in kind. You're not building a new fence or relocated fence. If you are, then we go with the permit route. Garage alteration is just existing footprint verification. Art Center did a finder's keeper update. They didn't have a permit for their signs. When they were doing all the new construction, it came obvious we had, they had a series of signs that went out and measured them. They were within three inches. So I granted them allowance on that one. Tilt is asking for a significant signage increase. We've denied that. They're going to go to variance. I'll talk to that in a bit. Building permits, just the two. We're here for the porch reconstruction and the garage alteration. We've had a nice ability to bring Mike in and he has taken on the building permitting, building inspection. And is currently being trained for all that aspect. I'm maintaining the zoning, the upfront face of the program. They come to me, we say, okay, zoning, me, it's going to go to Mike. By the way, here's Mike. So it's been going fairly, fairly well. I'm happy with that transition. One of the things I wasn't happy with is when I took Friday off and I wanted the inspection portion put in, it didn't get put in. So it's not in your reporting. But as far as building inspections, we did four. We did Fontneck Boulevard footing for a garage alteration. Mercer Avenue is the new house going in for Timmins. We did footing foundation, Wolf Plumbing, Webb Street for the porch recon. And then we did 625 Alexandria, which is the new house on the end of Alexandria here by 12. No certificates were issued this last month. We had no new variance applications. We had the existing variance application with French Creek. And then that went to the planning board meeting a week, 10 days ago. That went very, very well for us as a village. We got a lot of kudos and, and everything for the completeness of the application. Amount of detail we put. They had a good two-inch, three-inch application package of information, new information, existing information. Permits were back in 1969, a whole lot of supporting documentation and verification for what they were trying to do. It took a while. It took three months to compile that information. We did the public session where we did the essential housing board just to communicate what was happening. CLDC, billboard town board. So we did some upfront, you know, effort so that when we did go to planning board, everybody had an idea and a vision of what we were actually trying to do versus hearsay, rumor. I don't want that. And it went well. We got it approved. We want to go to seven and nothing. The nice aspect of it is though, it took us three months to do it. Similar construction with the antique boat museum annex took seven months. And they did it piecemeal. They would go in to a meeting, we need additional information, come back next month. Then come back, we need additional information. Seven months to do that. So it may have been painful for the three months to do it, but when you go to a meeting and the information is there, there's no request. I had told French Creek saying, expect a delay, expect request for information, and I was wrong. We, they said they had everything they needed and they passed it. That is our model and that's what we're going to be using for, moving forward. All right? So I did during the meeting, I put a footnote in here about planning board that there's supposed to be some landscaping around the laundromat on the corner there and they don't have it. So we are in the process of trying to find the landscaping plan, get it resubmitted, get it put together so that I can report it to the next planning board. So when they ask, I have to deliver. So. Nothing concerning Board of Appeals, no joint meetings. So inquiries, all right. Bayside Dock expansion. They want to expand two of their existing piers by 150 feet. I think it's A and B. Part of B, I believe, has got an N section of 15, 20, 30 boats. It's going to be pushed out even further into the waterway. They've come to us asking for, what is our thought before they go to the DEC, before they go to the Corps of Engineers? And I think there's a department of state or there is something within the state that they have to file for too as part of the joint application. What that has done though, is that it's opened up their current situation as far as parking. Okay? We have to evaluate parking as a set criteria for expansion of marinas. One slip, one parking spot per slip. They're going to have up to 200 parking spots required potentially for some of the expansion. They do not have that. All right? So I did raise that. Their response was, we were permitted to do it. I said, well, you know what? You've opened that permit back up. So be, you know, be aware that that's probably going to come down. I've got some concerns about the encroachment of the docks being pushed out into the mooring field. I'm going to request that they provide us with some survey information to show us where 150 feet is going to be impacted out into the navigable water of that mooring field. And then, like I said, they've still got to go through the DEC Corps of Engineers hurdles. Tilt and their sign. We had a preview meeting. They gave us an application, said, please deny this so we can go to variance. They are proposing a large, large, large sign on the water side of their office building which doesn't look horrible, but it's 14 feet high by six or eight feet wide and it's a tree. And within the tree is embedded the sign. And even that sign is, is kind of out of code with the, all the other signs that they have up. So we're, we're looking at that and they want to go to variance on that. But I just had a hard, hard idea of a 14-foot tree out on the waterway. That's an acceptable, allowable sign, but that's going to, that's why we have variances. See what everybody else says. See what the public says. So that's, we're having a pre-meeting with the Chair of Zoning, I believe, next week. The meeting for that sign variance would, I believe, be September 15th. So we're trying to get some resolution on that. Are they allowed or they're not allowed? So we're having, except pre that. I've had two inquiries from developers for the TIN, which is exciting to us. I had to write a three-page dissertation on what it would take to do something like that basing it on what I just went through with French Creek. A lot of upfront planning, a lot, a lot of upfront communication. I would probably say, learning from our lessons, public information sessions as well as the village, town, essential housing, things like that. So again, we got the model put together that we would like to see for these large construction projects. We are transparent in what we're doing. Information's going to be upfront. Information for French Creek was submitted to the board 20 days in advance of the hearing, which sometimes has not happened, but it's got to be in the norm. I wish it was 30 days. I would stick to 20 for that one. Stewart's is coming in and talking about converting the sliders. I'm sure everybody's heard that rumor. Again, they are grandfathered for variance for lot size. They're not 30,000 square feet. They're 26. They're required to have 30,000, but that's when the grandfather has a variance that stays with the property. Their variance for their sign also is transferable to Stewart's if they so need it. But they said they were doing no exterior renovations or expansion in our preliminary discussions. And I told them if they do that stuff, then they've got, they reopen that earning basket and things that come with it. Mars Pizza, Sub Shop, what was this inquiry about that? That's all it's been, inquiry, what they would have to do. And then I got an inquiry on Caddick for a garage variance. I believe she's right over here on.
Merrick.
Merrick. She got denied. She's come back. She's trying to put a garage on the backside of her house, on the other side of her porch, on top of the neighbors with a two-foot variance. And I said, no. She got denied. They're taking the proposing, so in proposal stage, taking the deck out, attaching the garage to the house. Then they all sudden, they found 15 feet of offering. I said, we would entertain that from a zoning standpoint. It would still have to go to the hearing because there's five feet on one side, 15 on the other. They have to have 10 on the one side that's five. But the five is a lot more reasonable than two. So there is some, some there. Complaints, we got several. Again, our, our policy and what we're trying to do, we get complaints all the time. Okay? We answer the phone, we get a complaint, talk to the people, try to talk them off the ledge. And our response is, if you have a serious complaint, you need to put it in writing and email us. If it's in writing, it gets addressed. If it's verbal, it gets responded to. All right? So we are responding to written complaints. So we had a series up here of John Street, 891 John debris. That was a property that was derelict. It was rented out. It was totally just destroyed. Owners came back in, they cleaned up the property. They removed the derelict truck that was in the backyard. And they actually, I believe, sold the property. We have a new complaint at 207 Emery for abandoned boat that's been there for apparently nine years. We just have to go check on the registration. Mike did a walkthrough and said, yeah, that boat's been there for nine years. Cause I've seen it there for nine years. But he forgot to check the registration. That's the key point for us being able to take action. 250 wall, abandoned cars. Actually, I don't think that's the right address. It's on the wall property. It is the one.
State Street.
On State Street. So it's probably 250 State. Everything on that road is 250, which was nice to me. I popped it up, all three of those houses, 250, except for Jeff's. That was a rental going bad. Heinz is in the middle of all kinds of disputes with that. He's got that car there. We've got permission to tow that car away by the police. Police issued them a notice and a, an action. And they didn't do anything. So Heinz has actually started to clean the back of the property up. And he's going to do something, I believe, that potentially might be a demolition down the road, but we'll see. Now we've still got the abandoned U-Haul truck behind the buildings here. I've got, I have a written complaint on that. I need to follow up on that. That's on me. Okay. Administrative actions, Bayside. Now here is one of my favorites. Let's get a permit for a shed and build an office. Let's get a permit for a shed and build a monstrosity of a shed office, workspace. All right? It happens all the time. It drives me nuts. They ask for A, they build B. They have built C, D, E, F and G. They've got, they were told at the hearing, it could not be an occupied shed. We're only using it for kayak rental. Nobody will be in it. We're going to hand papers out the window for people to sign. It's an active office with desks, wired, electrical, insulation. It is totally out of compliance for what they approved. I talked with the head of the planning board. I've got to issue a notice of non-compliance. We, this is something that is, is not an acceptable practice. And unfortunately or fortunately, they're going to be our test case subject that we are going to do, take action against them. All right? This has got to stop. And the criteria for an office building and a criteria for a shed are completely different. Foundation wise, stud wise, everything. They may have to rip that building apart to show us they built it in compliance. And we're pretty much sure they did not build it in compliance. So that's coming down the pike. That should generate some interest. Other big thing that's coming up and has been, been on our plate is the separation and merging of properties. And there was never a procedure for this before. It was just kind of, yes, you can, no, you can't. We're in the process of putting a procedure together. Okay? For what do you do? Because there are several phases that you have to do. There's got to be an, we're going to require them to do an application. I put down a fee to be determined. So much like a variance fee for us to review the application and make a recommendation. There's a village review and approval. There's a tax map merger with Jefferson County. There's a D merger that's got to be performed. Then once they've all done that, then they've got to do the zoning application. They've got to do building permit application. And here are the three properties that we have identified that are requested is. That's Mark Morja out on State. That's Mark Morja out on State. He's cleared a property against, next to a property he owns. He wants to merge the property so that he can make a townhouse community, similar to the rental he's already got there. Thousand Island Arts Center wants to merge Finders Keepers with the new building that they're putting together. They've already merged their existing building from the other side. And then Greg Pep out on Riverside has got two properties. He wants to separate his rental unit and divide that property and co-mingle that part with his existing property he owns on the water. And so, he wants to put a garage in. But, of course, he asked for the infamous garage with an apartment on top, and that's another battle to be determined. But he's not building it. Okay, questions?
Okay. On Kenzie Garlock's permit, I think his address on here is Garlock's Lumber. Where's the garage operation taking place?
I noticed that when I did do that, it is, I wrote it down somewhere, I'm sorry.
Yeah. It's not Garlock's Lumber, it's in the village, right?
Right, and that's his tax address. Okay? When I merged, on my spreadsheet, I've got property address, I got tax address. When I went and cut, merged, I put the property. It's, it's one of these garages, probably Frontak.
So, the other question I had was on 250 Wall, abandoned car house, FC, currently remney. Who's FC? What is it?
French Creek.
French Creek.
Yep, that's State Wall.
Okay. Great.
I got a couple of questions. So, with the merger and separation of the properties, are we going to charge a fee that allows us to have our attorney review it as well as a surveyor, you know, representing us review it, so that everything is done legally for the county and, you know what I mean? So that we don't end up, "Okay, I want to merge these two properties, I want to split these properties," and we end up with a huge legal fee for making sure that it's been done. So, I think...
That I'd have to look into. We are, they are required to have a survey by a licensed surveyor as part of their submittal to us for a permit.
But I would think we would want to represent it, representing us, right? The village, not just, you know, their lawyer and their surveyor, in which case that there's a considerable cost. But, on the other hand, we want to protect ourselves.
Right. I will look into that.
And the other question I have with, so the Bayside Marina Expansion brings up an interesting point. What is the deal? Like, can French Creek keep going one way and Bayside keep going another way, and all of a sudden, there's no waterway anymore? Like, how, who determines that? Is that, is that the village? Is that the town? Is that the core engineers?
It's DEC and core engineers.
Yeah, okay.
And what's allowable navigable waters. French Bay, French Creek's got a permit to do additional dredging, additional boathouses. So, we're going to see that next year, probably.
So, did the boat museum need a permit from us to dredge in front of their dock?
Not from us, but we got courtesy copied on it.
Okay, good. I've heard from some residents along French Bay that they're upset about the barges being moored out there. My answer is, well, you can put that in writing and ask.
Yeah.
Or, but I would tell you that when we, my understanding is when we rent a mooring, we don't say, "What kind of boat do you have?"
Yeah, no.
So, we only want pretty boats out there. I can't, you know, so I don't know, you know, their money screams everybody else's, so I don't know what to say other than that.
This came up a number of years ago, and there was conversation of moving the, over here by Goose Bay, and that was met with a considerable opposition. They were not going to have it, because they pay more taxes over there than they pay over here, and we're not going to have it, and you're going to keep everything over there. And we've heard this comment numerous times, and, you know, all the contractors have the right to put their, their equipment down.
There are boats moored in Goose Bay, sailboats moored out there right now, so...
But there's not many.
Is that, the village is mooring, mooring's out there?
It should be, yes.
So, we probably, I mean, they usually say we want more of my barge over there, and are we going to argue, would we argue with them over there?
That someone wants to do that?
Yeah, they pay the money like they do over here. I mean, we own the moorings, so, like I said, I think we ask for a pretty boat.
They could, they can do it, but it's not as much of an accessible area as over here. And the people at Washington Island put up quite a conversation.
Those big barges, I think they need to drop their H P's into there.
Yeah, they do.
Because the mooring.
They scud.
So, I don't know if they're actually using a mooring.
They scud them.
It's a good question.
Pardon me?
That's a good question, as to whether, because there is barges that go out there, but they're dropping them.
They're dropped in, they're not. There's no mooring for the barges. And those questions would be answered by Kevin, because he's the harbor master.
But it does seem like we're getting, I mean, that's a very congested area already, between the moorings and, you know, the marinas coming in both directions. Yeah.
I think it's...
And then you throw the parking.
I think it's going to be quite a process for French Bay to get more dockage, because they, they put up this other building, and I happened to be at the meeting, and they're like, "Oh, no, 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 it's going to be like this." And they completely turned it around, which they have done numerous times.
Do they have enough? I mean, you know, so Bayside needs, you said, what, 200 more parking spaces or whatever? Does French Bay have enough? Or French?
Yeah, my honest opinion.
And, yeah.
No.
Of course, yeah, definitely.
Because they are the master of, "I have this many parking spots for the marina. I have this many parking spots for the restaurant. I have this many parking spots..." Oh, oh, no, these are over here, actually, and those are over here.
And they're all safe, right, parking.
So, no. And that is something that we are paying more and more attention to, because it's becoming more a critical issue. We're getting squeezed. We don't have enough parking as it is. My idea of putting a two-story parking garage at Mars got shot down by the mayor, and I was like, "Dang."
Two-story.
Could you imagine that?
Yeah. Well, you can go down, you know, two stories below.
Into the gasoline.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Get the gasoline away down there.
Wear your respirator when you go get in your car.
Yeah, yeah. But this, yeah, this is a thing that's getting bigger and the congestion, and you can see the arguments, too, with, "Well, they did it," so, yeah, well, because, because now we're, you know, now, thanks to you, we are, and the village board, we're actually enforcing these things.
Yeah.
You know, and, but this is going to be complicated.
Yep.
Keep up the good work.
Mike finished his, his second course last week. He took that, and then this week he will take the test for it. So, that will be two courses that he's certified in. How many does he have overall to take? Is it?
Six.
Six?
By January.
But after the first one, he now is certified to do building inspections.
Yes, yes.
And the fire, fire building inspections are going to be coming up soon, and Mike's like, "Ay, ay, ay, ay." That's about his, "God, I quartered."
Now, how are we doing with the, you know, because you were having some issues with the back files. Is that working itself out? Are you getting access to the things you need to?
What fantasy land do you live in, Mike?
So, no, I guess the answer is no.
Nothing has changed.
We're, we're recreating a lot of things.
I love that you're digitizing everything going forward, so that's fantastic.
And, okay, and one aspect, yeah, that's frustrating. The other aspect is we've got to move forward.
Yeah.
Okay, we've got, we're in program development mode, we're not in reactionary mode, which we were in several months ago. If you saw me several months ago, you would say, "There's no way Dave's going to be here in August."
I wasn't sure he would be here, yes.
So, we're, we are, we're taking it as a learning experience, a stepping stone, and we're trying to, we're trying to be our own program. And it's coming along, and there's still things to do, things to learn, but it's going in a direction I think that we all want it to go in. And Mike has got the same type of vision for the village that I do, the mayor does, that we all, I believe, have, and, and, you know, consistency in our approach, protection of the resources that we have and the community that we have. And we get a lot of, we get a lot of backlash, but we're, we're saying, "This is the way things are going to be now, moving forward." And that backlash tends to quiet down, when they realize that we're actually doing something and not just saying something.
Yeah, agree, and you're making it fair, so everyone feels, I think that's always been a frustration.
Yeah.
"Well, these guys could do this, but I can't do this," and, you know, now...
And we still get that, and we still get that.
Yeah, sure, but you're, but you're developing a system going forward, like I was saying. It's all set. Is everyone going to be happy all the time? No, but at least now we feel like there's a system that can be understood.
Person A is going to be unhappy just as much as person B, because I'm going to tell them the exact same thing.
Right. Thank you.
Anything else?
Great job. Thank you. Yes.
Good job, David.
Thank you, David. David Powers, you're up, please.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for having me this evening. I just wanted to stop in. I wasn't able to be here for the last regular board meeting, so I want to make sure I can get here tonight to provide everyone an update on where the water project stands. So, you know, as a reminder, there's two contracts for the water project. There's the intake replacement, and then there's the water main replacements throughout, you know, a number of the side streets and the village grid proper. So, the intake project, we advertised for bid the first week of August. We're actually opening those this Thursday with the intent to make award on September 8th at your September 8th regular board meeting, so the first Monday after Labor Day. And then contract two, so that's the water main replacement contract. That was advertised last week. We intend to open that on September 19th, which is a Friday, so that we can issue a award at the village's second September meeting. So, there, you know, there's two pieces that are kind of crucial to both of these efforts. On contract one, the intake portion, being that we live on the wonderful St. Lawrence River, it comes with its own permitting challenges. First one being in-water working restrictions, and that's generally due to fish spawning periods. So, we can't work in the river itself between March 15th to July 15th. So, getting that intake bid this fall allows us to get the in-water work done before the end of the year. In all likelihood, what I expect is contractors will get the work done in the water, and then, depending on what kind of a winter we get, they may end up having to make the connection in the yard in the spring. But talking with contractors on this, they're all excited about this project, and they are hopeful that they'll be able to get it all done by the end of the year. The biggest issue holding them up will be the actual intake structure itself. I, it blows my mind, but with some of these process equipment, you know, the lead times on some of these is just astounding. To me, it's a perforated stainless steel basket screen, but they're saying it's a 12-week production time. So, that could be, you know, what holds them up, getting it all done this year, but at a bare minimum, there's a milestone in the contract requiring them to get the work done in the water, so that by March 15th of next year, we're all set on that end, and we won't have any restrictions there. So, that's the intake. And then on the water main replacement, as we all know, we have the John Street water main to replace in order to accommodate the Art Center. So, this project also has a milestone schedule included in it, so it requires the contractor to complete the replacements on Huguenin, so from James Street to John Street, they need to complete that section of Huguenin, John Street down essentially to Park Circle and tie into Mary Street, and then the block from Jane Street to John Street. So, it's about four blocks in total. It's about 1,700 feet that they're required to complete by the end of this year. Looking at, you know, our past projects, generally, what you'll see in a village setting is a competent contractor will do about 100 to 200 feet of water main replacement a day with water service laterals connected in. You know, if they're going in a town setting on the shoulder of the road, they can do 500 feet a day, but in the village, it's tighter, it slows them up a little bit. So, you know, looking at 100 to 200 feet a day, that's about three to six weeks. So, assuming that they can get started in earnest at the end of September, per the schedule, they should be able to have that done, you know, wrapped up by, by late November. So, that's where we sit currently. We've had a lot of interest on both contracts, which is great, from contractors. Today, I felt like every 30 minutes, somebody was calling me about contract two, so that's great news. I expect, you know, the usual heavy hitters, I'll call them, the North Country Contractors, the Vomans, the Luck Brothers, all of the main pipeline contractors that do work in the area have reached out to me already. So, I'm hoping for some competitive bids and contractors with the capacity to get it done this fall.
Great.
Great.
Is there any questions from the board?
Great. Good timeline, yeah, exciting.
Yep. Yeah, so we will, like I said, we'll be opening the intake on Thursday. Are you available, Amanda, Thursday?
Yep.
I'll be here, so I'll accept the bids. You know, we'll timestamp them at two sharp. Anything after two cannot be accepted. We'll open them, read them aloud, and then we'll go from there.
Very good.
Can you send me the advertising for the second one?
Will do, absolutely. Yeah, we can get it in.
Thanks.
Great.
Great, thank you, David.
Thanks. Very lively weekend.
Thank you. You as well. Any questions on the DPW report? They will be doing micro sealing of Strawberry Lane the week of September 2nd, which will be Labor Day, right after Labor Day, so next week that will get started, and all the businesses, along with residents, have been and will continue to be notified for that. And the police report, any questions on that? Any questions on the consent agenda, one through four?
No.
Could I have a motion to accept one through four?
I'll make a motion.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we need a motion to accept the July financial statements?
I'll make it. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Amanda, you wanted to add something?
Yes. I think I was asleep for the last, probably, four to six weeks with LGSS.
You skipped a little bit.
Our EFR should be filed by the end of this month, so that's the first time since I've been here that it's been filed in time of year.
That's correct.
So, we're making improvements.
Thank you. That's great. We also had the municipal solutions contract. They help us with money and our vans and our bonds. Any questions on that? Could I have a motion to accept that?
I'll make that motion.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then we've got new crossing guards, James Flanders, who's been there for quite a while, Chip Garnsey, also known as Clyde, Michael Doyle, and Michael Ashkoff are two new ones this year. Pat Young's is not returning this year. So, if I could have a motion to accept those four?
Do we do a fairly sizable background on the new guys? Do we know them? I've never heard of these names before, so. Michael is already running.
Yeah, so...
Michael Doyle, I know.
Michael Doyle has done it in the past. He's been a substitute for years.
He's with the fire department and the fire police? He's with the fire department and the fire police?
That would be a good question for Kevin.
Yes.
Because he is in charge of all of the crossing guards. And he would be the one that could do a background check.
Jim Flanders was a DPW employee?
I will check.
For years? I mean, years and years, he retired from the DPW, and Chip, everyone knows Chip. Most everyone knows Chip. So, did we make a motion for that? To accept these four? And this is good, because other years, we haven't had four, actually. We've only had two or three, and the DPW has had to jump in and help. So, could I have a motion to accept those four?
I'll make the motion.
In a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. I don't think we have any old business. It's been, um, somewhat quiet here within the office the past month, which has been nice. I have seen James Street in downtown to be busy. Last week, I looked out my window and said, wow. This little village wasn't, wasn't, uh, created for this type of tourism that we're having. We're having a great tourist season. You know, they, the comment has been, um, maybe things have been down due to the Canadians. I don't believe that that's true, business has been, was down initially because June was so cold. June was not warm at all, it was a cold month, and more businesses feel that was a problem than it has been with the Canadians. They're parked everywhere, as you all know, everywhere. So, it's been, it's been a great season. I think it's been a very good season. Today seemed a little quieter, but it's the week before Labor Day, and the kids going back to school, et cetera, et cetera, so. That's all I have, does anyone have anything to add, to say?
No, I think, I just think that, yeah, we've noticed, too, it's been very busy this summer, and I think we as a village have to be aware and keep in mind, not to grow too fast, not to get too cocky, but to keep this and that, again, going back to what Dave said, you know, really having that system that's consistent is so important. So, that we don't take all the business just because we can get it, but we have control, good control of growth, that's very important.
And again, you're 100% correct in that, we're working towards that all the time, and as Dave said, there's a lot of but currently, right now, there's quite a few businesses for sale, which concerns me. Things to keep our eyes open on, or about. That's all. And hopefully, somebody comes in and buys these businesses. Keeps it going.
I think the businesses of, uh, doing a nice job with the streets.
Yes.
We haven't, I haven't seen any issues.
I haven't seen any issues this summer.
Very happy about that.
And again, the DPW has done a fabulous job of keeping the village clean and taken care of, and they've just been wonderful about it. And that's a comment we hear frequently about how clean our villages, and that, that's due to the DPW. Yes.
A lot of comments about, uh, painting and building.
Yeah, the building looks great, and, uh, today Toby has been painting the, the marble.
If you get a chance, compare it.
Yes. It, it looks a lot better, yes.
Because he hasn't ever painted the marble on this side, I did earlier.
Yeah, it looks nice.
It's a huge difference.
Huge, yeah.
Is there any more detail about the developers talking about the TIN? It's good there's two.
No, there's, uh, they talk in broad terms, it's, um, they'd like to have living quarters on the top and retailing bottom, and that's all I hear.
Yeah.
I think that's the way it's zoned.
Yeah, I think it's zoned that way, yes. It will most likely end up being a tear down, it won't be a fixer-upper, it'll be a tear down.
Not necessary, we'll see.
Uh, the two, the two people that have, that have looked at it, that's what they've said, so. According to the realtor, the current owners are fine with that, according to the realtor, I don't know, but, uh, it's a, it's a cost. Do you fix it up for 10 million, or do you build new for five? We'll have to see where it goes. And they have to bring electricity in also, from Huguenin. There's no electric in that building right now. No, they never, they never.
Well, they didn't opt in for the.
They never opted in, so they, they, so, once the underground came in, there was no, there is no power to the building.
So, will that have to be underground?
No, they would come in from the transformers on Huguenin, is how it would be.
To the back of the building?
Yes. So, we'll see if any, either of these guys, individuals are serious or not. Uh, Albertine and Courier will be here this week to start looking at the inside of the building, up in the ceiling, things of that nature. I think that's all I know, but it's, um, Joanne's out for a few weeks, she's had a shoulder surgery.
Oh, she did.
Uh, last we heard, she was still very uncomfortable. That happened Wednesday, so. It'll take a little bit of time. There is, I will send you, I don't know if you all received a week or two ago, there's a, and I'll resend it to you, just so that you know it's coming, there's a, Tourism Council is doing a, um, marketing program down at the hotel September 22nd, that everyone's invited to. So, I will send that information to you, and, um, there'll be a lot of speakers. The Airbnb tax goes into effect September 22nd. I've had discussions with the county in regards to that, and there will be a company that the county is, that has hired, that will be monitoring all this, but they don't really know yet how it's all gonna play out. So, I don't know what our part will be in the whole thing. I did check to see if we could opt out, and the answer was no, it was, it's a county-wide, and you, as a village or town, cannot opt out. I did send that letter, the letter on to the town two weeks ago, two and a half. Heard nothing back.
Did we ever get anything back on the municipal agreements, municipal agreements?
Nothing.
Were they going to, the yearly? No, they, in our last joint meeting, I thought they said they were gonna share those with us, so we're gonna set up some time to talk about them, but hard to talk, we can't see them.
Yeah, they don't really have any incentive to work with us.
No, they don't.
And we don't really have any power to do anything about it.
That, you're, I have exhausted my emotions over bed tax, to be honest with you. I have talked to, to Jefferson, I've talked and I've asked, and it's, and they've all given me the same answer, there's nothing, there's nothing more we can do. But I also am not gonna stop.
Right.
It won't stop, but there's nothing that Jefferson County can help us with.
I was thinking about that old phrase, no taxation without representation.
Right, yes, yes, and I think it's just something that we continue to push, and, um, you know, there are some other ways. One of the things I've noticed is talking with people, people don't have any concept that this is happening, and then, when you tell them, they are a little bit like, really? So, maybe we have to go that route, I, I don't know yet.
Yeah.
Nothing, I haven't heard anything from, from them for long, well, since our last meeting, yes. That's all I have, anyone else have anything? So, our, our next meeting will be, what is it, not, is it September 8th?
Yeah.
In the future.
I know, as we've all said, it's gone by rather quickly. Hopefully, we have a nice, um, warm fall.
Yeah, yes.
That would be nice, that would be great.
Be good for the contractors trying to do this big project, too, so.
Looks like the, the, uh, ABM is coming to a close, or
Yeah.
They're moving along nicely, and really, the art center is moving along, and, uh, but, again, when I looked out my windows Thursday, I just shook, I said, we were never designed for this. I mean, you have cars going in every direction, and I want to revisit this fall, the, uh, one-way street aspects, because I'm seeing people do, the lady can't parallel park, and then the other lady is making a U-turn right in front of her, and people are parking the wrong direction. You take your life in your hands to go down Riverside Drive, yeah, so I would like us to revisit that, and, um, see if we get that going.
We have the old study to go off, so.
Yes, we do, and, um,
Start there.
I, I just think, I, you know, is it something maybe we try for six months, eight months in the winter, I, I don't know. But I think it is something that should be look at, look at.
I don't think it would make good sense to try in winter.
Well, I, I know.
Because you wouldn't have any attractive ones, you know, you just have people, I know that they keep, they have to, it's ready to get back to their house. You have to keep nobody around.
Kids driving around there, right on.
And one day, I, you know, when I left here, and I went down Mary Street in front of the, um, uh, wood boat. And they were having a slamming afternoon, you've got the construction.
That'll improve with the construction.
Yes, I do think it will be better, and, uh, there's been actually a few more parking spots added on that side also.
Actually, that brings up a good, so that, it'd be nice if we could have a bigger sign over here for the one-way, because I've seen so many people go this way, I mean, it happens all the time.
Yes, it does.
As a matter of fact, the first time I met my neighbor, new neighbor, he was going the wrong way, says, you're going the wrong way, and then he pulls into the T's, well, his driveway.
Yeah. Yeah, we watch, we see that.
Why does Mike have your name written, we're going the wrong way?
That's something that I really need to think about, too, if we think about, well, that was a signage.
Yes, signage, yes.
We were under construction, and so they had that sign to set up.
Yes.
So, we have to make sure that we don't make it worse.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
Yes.
That would make it difficult to also try, because once you buy all those signs, you're really buying into it. We're doing this.
Right.
You know, you can't just say that, that can, or tear down these signs and
Put them on Facebook or something. They are expensive, because they have to be DOT, and so you have to go to manufacturers to do the DOT signs.
But would you, would you talk to Terry or whoever about getting a better sign right here? I mean, because really, that would be huge. And all the kids are playing here, and
Oh, I agree with you, and that's part of the reason, besides the weather, that the Thursday farmers market was moved up to the Sierra Park, because it was getting so congested Thursdays here, dangerously.
Are we still feeling like that's been successful?
Exactly, from what I hear, it's been successful, yes, yes. They have more vendors, people that are going are saying, oh, parking is better, et cetera, so, yeah. We'll keep it up there for next year, because we just can't handle it here, and the way they tore up, the vendors tore the park up that, that day. Very disappointing.
Yeah, it was nice when the girls doing the flowers and stuff up there, they really kept it nice for a dry season.
Yes, they have, yes.
Yeah. And, and the tree is still alive, too.
The tree is still alive, yeah.
We can last for this, it's gonna be hard.
Yes.
Yeah, I was thinking of that.
So, could we have a motion to close the meeting?
I would make it, okay.
I'll second it.
All in favor?